Well, it looks like it's 6:30 and we have a quorum. So, welcome to the Thurston County Planning Commission for Wednesday, February 2nd, 2022. This is a virtual meeting on Zoom. I'm Eric Casino, Chair of the Board for this term. And I'd like to just introduce or start this out with a word on the commission. The Thurston County Planning Commission is a Citizens Advisory Commission to the Board of County Commissioners on land use planning matters, such as comprehensive plan and zording ordinance amendments. Planning Commission actions are in the form of recommendations to the county commissioners who are the final decision makers. All Planning Commission meetings are open to the public. Citizens are welcome to observe all Planning Commission briefings and work sessions. Planning, public comment is allowed on those topics for which public hearings have not been held. To start out with, we'd like to do some introductions. So I'll start out with Barry.
Barry Halverson, District 2, Washington, northeastern part of Thurston County.
Jim Simmons. You're on mute, Jim. Jim, we can't hear you. Jim, I'll circle back to you in a minute. Helen Wheatley.
Hi, I'm Helen Wheatley, District 1, Olympia.
Scott Nelson.
Scott Nelson, District 3.
Doug Carmen.
Doug Carmen, District 2.
Joel Hansen.
Sorry, I was muted. I'm here.
You want to introduce yourself, Joel?
Sure, I'm Joel Hansen, District 3. New member, so looking to get up to speed.
Thank you. And Kevin Pestinger.
Kevin Pestinger, District 1.
Jim, are you able to connect now? Maybe not with Jim, but Jim is here and we'll see if he can get this figured out. With that, is there a motion regarding today's proposed agenda?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any just further discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, I actually would like to add an item at the end. I don't think it should take too long. Maybe five minutes, maybe 10. And that would be discussion of the coming agenda for February 16th. And I can explain that now or or not. Maybe I shouldn't take my time on the floor to explain why I want to do that. I was looking as a new member, I was looking at the rules and procedures and I realized that the agenda isn't quite the same as as what the rules and procedures lay out. And so I'd like to talk about that and then.
Helen, I think I think your audio just went out, Helen. I I think that there's a motion on the floor, so could we get a second and maybe add this to the agenda?
Second.
All in favor of adding this to our agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Okay, we'll be adding that item to the agenda. Since it's been moved and seconded, can we have a call for the vote for the amended agenda to include Commissioner Wheatley's topic?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries and we will follow the agenda with Commissioner Wheatley's topic at the end. Next on next on our agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes. Is there a motion regarding the approval last meetings minutes from January 19th, 2022?
I moved to approve last meeting, minutes for last meeting.
There a second? Second from Commissioner Nelson. All in favor of approving the agenda meeting minutes from January 19th, 2022, say aye.
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 Any nays? Motion carries the meetings from January 19th, 2022 are approved. Now is the time when we move into the public communication section of our meetings. For this virtual meeting, please choose the raise your hand option if you wish to address the Planning Commission. I will then promote you to a panelist or Sonia will promote you to a panelist when it is your turn to speak and be seen. To be seen, please turn on your camera. If you are dialing in, press star nine to raise your hand. Make sure to also choose star six to unmute yourself. The three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. If you have issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call 360-972-6785 to make your public comment. Thank you. First up. Let's see. Looks like the only public comment I have so far is from Charlotte Persons. Can we promote her?
Yep.
Thank you, Charlotte, we hear you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm not sure what I can comment on because I think there might have been public hearings, but they might have been a while ago on the HCP and on the the 5G, the wireless communications. Am I allowed to comment on those?
I'm sorry, Charlotte, we've already had public hearings on those, so those topics are both past time for taking public comment at the Planning Commission, but you will have plenty of opportunities to address those topics to the Board of County Commissioners as they have still not have reviewed those issues. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Martin Chen, would you like to provide testimony?
No, not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Josh Stottlemyre?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So Josh Stottlemyre, Incorporated Thurston County. I was one of the Wireless Stakeholder Committee Committee members. I'm aware that we're not accepting public comment on the wireless stuff at this time. However, I would like to request that you open a second round of public hearings on the wireless code. Later this evening, you'll be asked to continue the direction and development of that code. And on the 16th, it'll be presented with recommendations from the Wireless Stakehold Committee, which I participated. This code will have long-term implications for every single member of our community and requires more consideration than most choices that will come before your body. And it needs more public comment. We hope you will direct the staff to significantly modify the draft code to increase look control and protections and protect property values as well as hold a second public hearing before the Planning Commission. The choices that will be laid before you from the Stakeholders Committee are significant, but only a portion of what is truly needed. The community wants a voice in the changes being considered, and I'm aware of many people who still want to comment. We ask that you please give it to them. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Josh. Is there any other public comment? Please raise your hand if you'd like to address the Planning Commission. With that, it looks like public comment has concluded, so we'll move on to our next agenda item, which would be an address from Community Planning Economic Development Director Josh Cummings. Thank you, Josh.
Great, thank you, Chair Casino. Hello, Plan Commission, I am Joshua Cummings, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, CPED. I just wanted to join this evening towards the beginning to say thank you. This is a big lift. I know evenings are precious and I really appreciate volunteer citizens participating in this group. This is a really important, as all of our boards and commissions are, but this is really important in terms of the policy that this group reviews for land use and building codes. And we do require that, excuse me, we do request that you guys engage so deeply in the material that you're able to look at the difficult items and read through all the stuff that staff is presenting you because you really are that first filter of information and then the recommendation that goes to the Board of County Commissioners. So I really appreciate you volunteering to be part of this group that requires so much reading and so much sometimes mental acuity. The goal here is to ensure that the staff is able to facilitate the dialogue with this group and that the information that staff brings helps you in your decision-making process as that filter to the Board of County Commissioners. The Board of County Commissioners directs the staff and prioritizes their work, but it is important that we work in tandem with the Planning Commission. And I do, let me see here, I wanted to touch on a couple of other things here. Let's see. Oh, I did want to make sure you were all aware, the Board of County Commissioners is working on a handbook for all boards and commissions and how they operate and any questions that might arise. So be looking for that in the next couple of weeks. We'll bring that forward. In the meantime, though, I believe that we all have a shared expectation of civil and respectful engagement. And as citizens and residents, you should feel free, if there is a moment where you're feeling that the civility is out of bounds, please do step up. All of us on this call are humans, so I, the expectation is that all of us can ensure that we maintain a civil dialogue, whether it is your staff or a planning commission member. In the past, they used to, in the before times, I'd bring my kids to the planning commission meetings. And so you have a seven-year-old and 11-year-old and they're learning what civics looks like. They do sometimes pop in and look at the meeting time to time. So do, I do appreciate how civil this group has become and continues to engage. Any questions for me? Yes, please, Commissioner Wheatley.
Thank you. I was just wondering, you know, I was trying to sort of understand the the infrastructure, I guess, behind the commission and I'm really wondering what kind of a budget it has and how the how the budget works or how how staffing time is budgeted. I mean, can you can you kind of provide a bit of a picture of what we have to work with?
So I saw Chris pop on, which is good. The Planning Commission itself, I do not believe has a dedicated budget. Is that correct, Chris? And the work that is done by the staff is by the topics that are assigned by the Board of County Commissioners. So when we go through the docketting process, those items are a part of the essentially funded through the general fund. So the staff and community planning is general fund funded. Is that helpful?
Well, sort of, I guess. I mean, I don't want to, yeah, I guess I want to understand as a commission member sort of the range of, you know, I know that the commission is or that you're understaffed right now and don't want to put pressure on staff. And so I want to sort of maybe understand the parameters of of what we as commissioners can ask for or not without causing too much stress on everybody.
I think I understand the question. So let me go back to that statement where the Board of County Commissioners is the one that's setting the work plan and priorities for the staff. If the Planning Commission is interested in having another topic for the staff to explore, that request can go from the Plan Commission to the Board of County Commissioners and they will decide if it's added to the work plan of staff. Thank you for that. That's helpful.
Any other questions for Director Cummings? It doesn't look like.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, go ahead. If you got something to say, Josh, please say it.
I was just going to say that I'm also available. I might not always come to every meeting, but please do feel free to reach out to me at any time. I am interested in staying engaged and making sure that you all feel served so that you can make your best decisions. I think I see Mr. President, the Chair, Commissioner Pestinger has his hand up there if you're casino.
Kevin, please.
Josh.
Yeah.
So can you, you mentioned a bit about the staffing. Is there anything you can share with us about sort of how many positions are filled and empty and how many you hope to fill over what timeframe?
Yeah, I appreciated Commissioner Wheatley's comments about being understaffed. I think that we're we're doing okay at this moment. The commissioners allowed for a few extra positions within the community planning budget. They are considering other options as well. We have a good work plan. You know, it's about the balance between the number of staff we have and the number of issues that we can push through. But also there's you and we don't want to overload volunteer citizens, residents who have participated in this group. So we've got kind of a couple of different things happening. In terms of staffing, Chris, do you want to provide actual direct numbers?
Sure. So we are hiring for an associate planner position to backfill somebody who has left. We are also looking to backfill the planning manager's position and that's in Josh's court. And we are, we also received budget for one full FTE, which will be a project manager to take on the a lot of the agricultural issues and voluntary stewardship program and being that liaison and bridge between voluntary stewardship and our permitting, but as well as helping with some of the projects that you'll see, including the what we call CPA 16, which is the community-driven ag project, TDRs, PDRs, kind of the whole suite there. We also did receive budgets to increase a current point five FTE to a full-time FTE. And that particular person has been very much working on climate change issues that will come back before this Planning Commission, once we have a a work plan set by the board.
Commissioner, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
And you know, let me just take one more minute to do a quick overview of CPED. So CPED, the portion that you're dealing with in community planning, that's the other name for it is long-range planning. So it's the vision for what our community members think our community should look like in terms of land use and building. Another portion of our group is called current planning or development services. So that's where the vision gets enacted in the actual building permit codes. You will see some of those development code items come before you as well. But think of CPED in really big terms. Long-range planning, community planning is the vision, the long-range vision for our future, the community and development services. Current planning is how that vision is implemented in actual buildings. We also have Services for Water Group as well as the fair and our partnership with WSU Extension. So this community planning is kind of a big unit, but really it's your portion, your main portion is the vision for our future in our community. So it's a big job. Thanks for doing it. Anything else?
Kevin, was that everything for you?
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thanks for coming in, Director Cummings, and glad to see you.
Thank you, Chair Casino. Let me know if there's anything I can do for any of you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your service.
With that, we'll move on to agenda item number five, the work session for A19 wireless communication codes. I believe that Caitlin Nelson is here to lead this work session. Are you there? Yay.
I am. Can you hear me okay? Okay. Good evening, Planning Commissioners. I'm Caitlin Nelson. I'm an associate planner in community planning. Since it has been a few months since you've reviewed information on related to the wireless code update and we have a few new planning commission members. This work session is just to provide a review of what has been done on the wireless code update and introduce what we'll be discussing at the next work session. The wireless code update, also known as docket item A19, is a repeal and replace of chapter 2033 and includes updates in several other code sections. There have been several work sessions on this item and an open public hearing was held on June 2nd, 2021. This update is necessary to be consistent with the FCC as well as other court cases and legal determinations. In order to efficiently determine what authority the county possesses to make changes around these legal requirements, the county has been working with Ken Feldman, who has presented to the Planning Commission at previous work sessions, and Colleen McCroskey. They're considered part of Thurston County staff and they are not representing the wireless industry. Their most recent role has been to listen to concerns from both the wireless industry representatives and community members and advise staff on which changes would be likely to put the county at risk of significant legal action. During the open public comment period, there were several comments received requesting that community members be more involved in requesting changes to the draft. Planning Commissioners provided a request to the Board of County Commissioners to create a committee that reflects this. The board reviewed that and agreed to create a stakeholder committee requesting that it also include wireless representatives and limiting the work to three meetings. Those meetings have taken place. The Planning Commission after that had determined who to invite to participate in the stakeholder committee at a following work session. Participants included community members Josh Stottlemyre, who spoke earlier, Kristy White, Dorothy Lyons, and Sam Milham, and regionally local wireless representatives, Meredith Paffs and Kim Allen, as well as planning commissioners Simmons and Pestinger. Ken Feldman and Colleen McCroskey also attended these meetings. At the next work session, staff will provide the results of the stakeholder committee to you along with any other associated documents. Then we will have a five-minute presentation from one or two community member participants of stakeholder committee and another from the wireless representatives. We can then go over the items that are included and summarized with the option of determining which items the Planning Commission would like to see more information on. Discussion at the stakeholder committee meetings were largely led by community members. If suggestions went beyond what the county has the legal authority to change, it wasn't included in items summarized from the stakeholder meetings. And there wasn't a consensus agreement on items to include between the community members and the wireless representatives. So suggestions from both will be included in the documentation that I provide you. Some suggested items fit well within the scope of an update to the section of code like we've normally do. Some may be something that would fit more in other code sections or beyond what would normally be in this type of code, maybe more restrictive or asking for more information than would normally be in other similar types of land use code. And others are procedural. Like I mentioned before, I'll be providing that to you at the next work session, sort of a breakdown of of how we see each of those items. Definitely less than 30 minutes, but I, at this time, have any, I can answer any questions if I'm able to or I'd like to hear from you on if there's any information or any questions that you have that I could bring back to you at the next work session since we're going to be getting into so much information.
Go ahead, Commissioner Carmen.
Caitlin, can you give us some background on on Mr. Stottlemyre's request? Has there been discussion at the stakeholders meeting about opening up the discussion? Is there any background or information you want to provide us?
I mean, the members of the stakeholder committee did have an interest in holding another public hearing. Commissioner Simmons might be able to speak to that because he spoke with them during those meetings about about whether or not they wanted to make that request. Planning Commission has the ability to open another public hearing. It's usually done if a significant change has occurred in the draft code and at this point staff has not been directed to make any changes to the draft code. So if you, if we review the items from the stakeholder committee and you request that staff make certain changes or look into more information, at that point is normally when you would request holding another public hearing to review that updated draft.
Commissioner Simmons, can you elaborate on that?
Yeah, and Caitlin did a great job to chair it and overseeing that group, so I'm very, very pleased with how that went. I think mostly what what I gathered from the community side of the group was they were afraid that they weren't going to be heard and understood. And so that was why they wanted to make sure that they were hopefully participating either in the in the conversation with us here or again for the public, another public hearing. So that was what I gathered and I don't know, Caitlin, you might think it's a little bit different, but I think they were just afraid that their message wasn't going to get across.
Yeah, I think there was concern about the the time that we were discussing this being limited to three meetings and I don't want to misrepresent them by trying to summarize what their concerns were. So that's part of why we're hoping that they can voice some of that at their presentation at the next work session.
Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, I'm just looking for a little clarity on process here. I'm I'm a newbie, so this is all new for me. So so if I heard you correctly, Caitlin, sort of the procedure would be that at the next meeting, we're going to sort of get the whole package to, you know, up till now. And then if the commission wants to propose some change or to consider some change to the draft or to whatever it is that you present at that point, because you're saying there hasn't been a change so far to the to the draft changes or to the to the draft.
Yeah, correct. The most.
At that point, at that point, at the next meeting, if if the commission wanted to have another hearing, that's the time at which they would say we're interested in a change. We'd like to have a hearing on that. Is that right? That's kind of the steps of the procedure if the commission were to want to have a further hearing?
Chris, did you want to say anything on that?
Sure, I can chime in. Typically, we would, if the Planning Commission has within their purview to ask for staff to open up another public hearing for a particular project that typically occurs when there is substantial significant change to the draft. Because there is another public hearing after the Planning Commission's recommendations that is with the Board of County Commissioners. So this isn't the last time the public can provide their comments. They did provide their comments and input during the stakeholder meeting group and you will hear that next week in their own words from their representatives. And they will be able to provide additional testimony on the recommendation at the Board of County Commissioners public hearing. But again, it is within the Planning Commission's purview if they so chose that there was significant change to open up a public hearing again.
So yeah, just to be really clear, you know, to understand the steps. So so far, the Planning Commission has not proposed substantial changes in its discussions. So the next meeting would be sort of the time if it wants to see substantial changes, that would be the time to bring those up at this, at the next meeting because that's when we're going to be getting the packet.
Yes, but the request to hold another public hearing based on substantial changes would be after you receive another copy of that updated draft and if it's determined that that is a substantial change. At this next meeting, we'll just be looking for direction from Planning Commission on what you want to see changes to and then I'll have to come back later with what those might look like.
When the Planning Commission forwards the recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, will the subcommittees' reports be fully encompassed in that and forwarded to the Planning Commission or forward to the commissioners at the same time?
I would be providing the board with with all of the information that I provided you. I, yeah, I mean, I hope so.
Great, thank you. Do we have any other questions for Caitlin this evening? Like Kevin?
No.
Caitlin, did you have anything else for us this evening?
No, I just wanted to make sure that there was time to ask any questions. No, I just wanted to make sure that there was time to ask any questions, just because it's a, there's a lot of information involved. And I'll be sending out an update of all of the previous documents that you've been provided as well. So.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be moving on to item six on our agenda work session for the Habitat Conservation Plan from Chris Chappell.
Good evening. I don't know what time it is anymore. I am Christina Chappell, I'm senior planner. I'm the interim planning manager for community planning in community planning and economic development department. And yes, we will be starting the review of the Habitat Conservation Plan implementing ordinance. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation that I really hope is going to work. So please bear with me a moment. All right, seeing my presentation. So the goal of today's briefing is to learn more about the HCP implementing ordinance and to generate and receive questions from the planning commission. I expect that there will be a lot of questions and we'll take the implementing ordinance section by section. This is a development code docket item. It is A on the development code. The codes that are proposed for change are title seventeen with a new code, new chapter seventeen fourteen. And targeted changes to title twenty four, which is the critical areas ordinance specifically in chapter twenty four, twenty five, which is the fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. We'll talk more about that, but what we don't want to do is have conflicting or overlapping codes or requirements that make things more difficult or create muddy waters for applicants. We want to make sure that we're providing a streamlined path. And the benefits of the Habitat Conservation Plan and the implementing ordinance is it provides a path for project approval with endangered or threatened species that are covered by the HCP. It provides certainty for the next 30 years, and it provides for threatened endangered species protections. So the HCP implementing ordinance, what does it do? It adopts the Habitat Conservation Plan. It provides the regulatory basis to implement and enforce it. It describes when the code applies and to whom it applies. It provides the permit review mechanisms to staff and public in an understandable format, because if any of you have had a chance to review the HCP, you know, it is very thick and it is written for the federal government. It also describes the administrative processes. What it doesn't do is open up the Habitat Conservation Plan for changes. The HCP is a mitigation plan that was developed in concert with stakeholders and with the Board of County Commissioners' direction to obtain a permit from the federal government. So there will be areas that there may be questions about. We can do some clarifications on. But any areas where there is a cost for change that changes the HCP, those are areas that we are not going to be able to make those amendments to. So what is changing? Well, got new ordinance. The Gopher Study that has been going on, once the HCP implementing ordinance is adopted, once we receive an ITP and it's adopted, there will be no more need for a Gopher Study. So the June to November timeframes will go away and most applications will only need a desktop review. Now sites with Oregon spotted frog within the Oregon spotted frog screen and have wetlands will need a site visit. And there are procedures that are laid out in appendix F, and we'll go through those. It also provides for mitigation options, which is the I think one of the biggest bonuses for of the HCP is that people don't have to go out and figure out what that mitigation needs to be, where it is and how to purchase it. There are three options written into the Habitat Conservation Plan, and that's a fee in lieu that is land in lieu. So somebody could provide if it's appropriate and meets the requirements, they could provide land in lieu of paying that fee. Or if there are mitigation banks out in the out in our area, then they could purchase conservation credits through that particular mitigation bank, so long as it was approved by U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So I'm going to stop there and the people know that they can find more information about the HCP and after tonight, they'll be able to find a copy of the implementing ordinance at thurstonhcp.org. I'm going to stop sharing and I'm going to reshare and we're going to start going through the ordinance itself. I did see questions though before I start.
Go ahead, Commissioner Wheatley.
Oh, yeah, just a real quick, quick question. What do we know about the timeline for when fish and wildlife is going to come back with an approval? And what happens if they don't approve the plan as submitted? I mean, what if there need to be some changes?
So we've been doing those iterative changes for the past number of years. And this last draft four, we've had some clarification changes that have, excuse me, have occurred. But we don't see any reason why U.S. Fish and Wildlife wouldn't approve the Habitat Conservation Plan and issue the incidental take permit. As far as the timeline is concerned, I can give you broad generalizations, but we don't have control over their processes. So we are looking to have a final final EIS, excuse me, a final environmental impact statement published at the end of March. Yes, at the end of March. There will then be a 30 day hold on fish and wildlife making any formal agency actions, which is when they'll be doing all their paperwork to get the all of their necessary things in order. And we could see as early as mid-April, an incidental take permit from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Now that is barring any additional changes or challenges during the hold period or any foreseen circumst- unforeseen circumstances. Once the incidental take permit is issued, we will then be able to finalize and lock down any language in the implementing ordinance that may very well need to be amended based on some minor clarifications that have been done. That's, that's the timeframe.
Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah, when you, when you say a whole period, is that an additional period that where the public would, would be able to supply more input? And also, is this going to be something, if that's the case, would this be advertised out there? Or not advertised, but would this be posted that additional input could be made?
Right, so the hold period is actually an appeal period. So they aren't taking additional comment. The, and yes, it will be, it will be noticed and published in the federal register. The county will issue a press release for the, the publication of the final EIS. I did want to mention one additional thing. So, you know, we get there, there are a number of moving parts to this entire program. The incidental take permit is just one of them. The implementing ordinance is another piece. But there is also the conservation land system out there that needs to be created. And the county is working diligently to find and to work with willing sellers. But the conservation land system is the mitigation. And without that conservation land system in place or a portion of that in place, being able to issue those permits under an incidental, under the incidental take permit would be prohibited. We have to have the credits or the mitigation in place prior to allowing impact. So, you know, staff is working a number of different pieces of the overall program. But tonight is how, if it's all that's in place, what does the, what do the rules look like? Okay. Let's see if I can.
Quick question. So there was already a public hearing on HCP?
No, there has not been a public hearing on the Habitat Conservation Plan.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Maybe. Sure. All right. Can everybody see that? Maybe I'm going to zoom in a little bit. All right. So as I previously mentioned, this is a new chapter, so we're not repealing or replacing anything. We're plunking in a new chapter into title seventeen. We did not get creative in the name. It is the Habitat Conservation Plan or HCP implementing ordinance. We don't want to confuse the public. Everybody knows the Habitat Conservation Plan and in the acronym, so we kept it simple. It does incorporate by reference the Habitat Conservation Plan as it will be approved by the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So it may not be exactly what you've currently seen to date. That final draft, HCP, or the final HCP will be issued upon issuance of the incidental take permit. And that is the document that will be incorporated by reference. The purpose of the Habitat Conservation Plan in implementing ordinance is to establish the comprehensive framework to protect and conserve rare, threatened and endangered species while improving and streamlining the environmental permitting process for impacts of future development on these species. It establishes the procedures to implement the Thurston Habitat Conservation Plan, which provides the basis for permits and authorizations necessary for lawful take of covered species which have been listed as threatened or endangered pursuant to the ESA. That's a big, long statement to say this gives us the legal authority to implement and enforce. I see a question. Yes.
Well, maybe, I don't know how we're moving forward on this, but I would like to make a comment on the purpose on seventeen point four oh point oh one five. Would this be the time to do that?
Sure.
Quickly, okay, well, I appreciate that it does reference the Endangered Species Act, which is kind of the genesis of this. I think it can be, it's often customary to go into some detail about if you're talking about purpose, this is the place where the county can sort of talk about why it's trying to save these species, you know, what, what sort of the parameters are of the Endangered Species Act? And to, and to discuss, you know, what, what the goals and aims of the Endangered Species Act are. I think this is maybe not, if somebody is coming to this, they're not getting a sense of of direction about what the county wants to accomplish with this. You know, in other words, for example, there's a tendency to think that the Endangered Species Act is sort of like how we think about the Shoreline Management Act and the idea of no net loss. But in fact, if you read the Endangered Species Act, the goal of the act is to take the endangered species out of danger. It, it know, it's, its goal is to take them off of the list because they have what they need. And I think it would be a good thing to include that as the purpose of, of this code. So that's just a comment.
Any other discussion?
Well, I would, I would think that that's actually in the Habitat Conservation Plan. And I think that's a lot more detail than we want in our comprehensive plan.
Well, there's a rule against detail. Particularly, I mean, it's kind of, it may be partly a, an aesthetic question. It might be a policy question. I'd be interested to know what others think about that. It's not that unusual though, for, for, for purpose to be kind of more, this is the place where you can really talk about it in grand terms.
Yeah, this is the HCP. It seems relevant and appropriate to put it here.
Go ahead, Commissioner Carmen.
I think, I think it states well enough in this section. We can't get too involved in explaining everything over and over again. So I agree with Scott. I think that it's covered in the Habitat Conversation Conservation Plan.
Commissioner Hanson?
I would just comment that I don't see any language like the word restore, you know, it says that it's to protect and conserve rare and threatened endangered species, but I, I don't see anything positive in terms of you know, restoring the species or anything to that effect. And so maybe we could add something like that in there.
Yeah, and I'd like to comment on that if I may, sure. So we have to remember that the Endangered Species Act is the charge of U.S. Fish and Wildlife on federal government. What we're doing is ensuring that our, our county capital facility projects and the development projects that come into our permitting center are covered for incidental take. That does not mean that we're recovering the species. That is the charge of U.S. Fish and Wildlife. Our only requirement under the law is to make sure that we are mitigating our impacts, and that's what the Habitat Conservation Plan is doing.
Commissioner Wheatley?
However, the statement of purpose references the necessarily references the Endangered Species Act. And like I said, it's, it's not at all unusual to see language that explains what the true purpose is and, and it is restorative. And we do not have to construe the language so narrowly if we don't choose to. And I think it's important to keep that in mind. Because this is, this is something that's going to essentially be for thirty, you know, it's a, it's a 30 year cycle. And people can remember or forget things over 30 years. And I think it's often helpful to have some reference to what the intention is. It's, it's not necessarily always the case that for the public reading the code that they're going to go back and look at the ESA and then understand how that relates to who has what jurisdiction over it. The state and the county and other jurisdictions are working on behalf of the federal government. It's not, you know, it's, it's a, it's a responsibility that's delegated to us to carry this out, but we are doing something that is in line with a federal act with a purpose, and it doesn't hurt to put that purpose into the code.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yeah, Chris.
Yeah, Chris, I'm just, just a bit of clarification. What we're going through right now with you is the actual update to the environmental ordinance of the Habitat Conservation Plan. Not the conservation plan itself, which is this other hundred ninety-four page document. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is the ordinance that implements it.
So the ordinance quite literally is gonna be a much smaller document to put in the ordinance. The HCP itself actually goes into quite a bit of detail on vision, goals, purpose and need, which, which is where it should be. I'm not saying that additional clarification on purpose is not necessary, but this is the, the ordinance that enforces the HCP. It's a hundred ninety-four pages. It includes a lot more detail. Thank you.
Commissioner Hanson?
I, I would just comment that it, I don't think it takes a lot of language in this section to get to the big idea. To purpose, what is the purpose of this thing? And if the Endangered Species Act says that, that the goal is to restore these species, to take them off the list, that seems like the big idea. And, and then all the details about how we get there. Yeah, put those in a larger document, but, but let's at least come out and say what it is we're hoping to accomplish. So that thirty years from now, or in the, in the next thirty years, people can look at this and clearly understand. Oh, this is, this is the intention and, and maybe there's different paths to get there. But the idea is that, not that we, you know, come up with ways to, to meet the requirements when, when we very well may just, you know, have some of these species, you know, go extinct in Thurston County by meeting the requirements. The purpose is to try to not have that happen and try and establish populations that can, can thrive in such a way that, that they're no longer need to be listed.
There any other discussion on this particular portion of, of the presentation? Chris, if you want to move forward, that would be great.
Sure. Okay, so and we're getting into the bit more of the meat of this. So the applicability, who is required to go through this review? And what we've envisioned and what we've put in the plan is that basically any development that requires a planning permit, they will need to have a review to determine if they have habitat on their property. And if their habitat, if there is covered species habitat on their property, then this particular review will be required. That includes projects that have what is considered, that are considered vested. And there is no vesting in federal law. So should an applicant who has already submitted their application, who has gopher soils or has Taylor checkers, spot butterfly or organ spotted frog habitat on their property, be impacting those, that habitat or those species? Then they would need to provide mitigation either through the Habitat Conservation Plan or provide some other documentation to show that they meet the ESA requirements in order for them to move forward. And we can talk a little bit more about how that all works. But there are some projects that do not need to go through this particular review. And a vast majority of those projects would be those that have already received a Mazama pocket gopher review completed prior to the effective date of this particular ordinance. And it lays out specifically that they needed to meet the US Fish and Wildlife Guidance for assessing potential take, which is a document that was received by the county in twenty eighteen. And how we've been implementing those, the current review of gophers or projects on gopher soils. If they have a building permit that's gone through that review and, but they haven't started construction, they, they're good to go. They don't need to come back in for anything else from us. If they received that, we'll call a critical area documentation or permit review, and that particular document is still valid, then they don't need, and, and it showed that they didn't have gophers. We clarify that, then they're good to move on to the next steps for development. Mining applications won't go through, they're not subject to the Habitat Conservation Plan. It's not that they aren't subject to the ESA. It's just that they are not a covered activity under our Habitat Conservation Plan. So they would need to provide documentation to the county showing that they have gone through and received an individual or incidental take permit for their project. Projects that are working within an existing building footprint, they don't need to have this review. And then projects for which US Fish and Wildlife has issued, this is very technical language, thank you, to the attorneys. Basically, what that says is if US Fish and Wildlife has issued them an incidental take permit, and that's the ten A one B, or it is a project that was subject to what we call Section Seven consultation. And those are typically projects that a good example would be a county roadway project where we receive federal funding. Federal funded projects or federal, federal projects need to have a federal, the federal consultation. And that would fall under Section Seven. So they would have had a review. They don't need to go through another one. Demolition permits don't need them. And properties which are fully forested, which are confirmed by staff, don't need to have this. They are not habitat for the Mazama pocket gopher, the Taylor checkers, spot butterfly or the Oregon spotted frog. And then there is an exemption in the incident, or excuse me, in the endangered species, excuse me, the listing for the Mazama pocket gopher. And this is only for the Mazama pocket gopher. And we call that this, the four D rule. There are a number of items that do not need, that were need a review under the HCP because they were not considered a project that would take a species. And a large portion of those projects would be agriculture related.
Yeah, Chris, I don't know the answer to this. I, I thought it was one year. But A three, it says the review building permit has not expired. Is that typically one year from date of application and approval? Or has that changed depending on the type of project?
It does depend on the underlying project. Building permits typically are, are valid for three years.
Three years, okay.
But they may have additional permits that extend that out.
Okay, but it would say that clearly on their permit as to what the expiration date is?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll stop there. And if there are any other questions or clarifications that we can provide in this section?
Commissioner Carmen?
Yes, the, the section that says this for all, or the, all projects require a permit. So is that, that, other than these exclusions that you have here, does that mean all?
Yes, that means all. Any project, any area that would impact the pocket gopher or the covered species.
I guess I'm, I'm confused. Maybe it's just that I don't understand how the, the gopher areas are established. But I know of two specific parcels that somebody built a house on and they had to do a pocket gopher inspection and another property that's gonna build a house on, and they have to do the same thing. Both pieces of property are glacial till where it's ninety percent rock and ten percent dirt. And I, you know, gophers can't live in that environment. So I'm wondering why parcels with that kind of soil would require a pocket gopher inspection?
So I wouldn't be able to answer that without knowing which parcels those are or what soils the federal government did list out specifically which soil complexes are considered pocket gopher habitat. And those are the soils that are mapped preferred or more prefer, more preferred or less preferred in the county's geodata system.
So do you go by parcel, parcel by parcel or by area? Does that map?
That, I'm not understanding the question.
So is the soil classified parcel by parcel or by area?
So the soil classifications were done by, I guess, area. There, I mean, NRCS actually does the soil classifications. We pick up the soils map from the conservation, soils conservation and overlay that on the, the county and then overlay the parcels on top of that so that you know what kind of soils you have within your parcel.
Okay, I'll, I'll send you the two parcels because I just need to understand. Then you can let me know.
Yeah.
Does anybody else have any questions on this topic? Oh, Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I'm, I'm actually wanting to do a bit of a time check. And I have a question about process again because we have fifteen minutes more to go on this item. And I'm wondering, when, when we got the packets, there was one question that was sort of posed in that. And I'm wondering, Christina, if you would like us to talk about that question tonight? Because it seems like we only have fifteen minutes to go.
That would be great if we could talk about that because I could then develop something and put it in for the planning commission to review.
Well, may I propose that we just jump ahead to talking about administration? And especially that, that one question about seventeen forty-one ten.
Please do, Commissioner Wheatley.
Okay, great. Well, I'll, I'll give the first input then on that. Because the question that was posed was, there's a language about creating an HCP implementation team. And I know a lot of people are very concerned. You know, this, this whole approach is kind of a relatively new one for how conservation plans are put together. It's more familiar, this, this kind of approach is, is kind of familiar and recognized as being, you know, pretty successful for wetlands. But it's not so common to have it applied for prairies. And then on top of that, we have like a very unique prairie. So I know there's a lot of concern about enforcement in the HCP. And this particular part of it, seventeen forty-one ten, is the really key element in the enforcement. I think there's a lot of concern that a lot of the things that are, that might be considered kind of under the enforcement side, there's a fair bit of danger of sort of trying to get the horse back in the barn after it's been let out and in terms of permitting and then the actual effects of permitting on whether that's gonna lead to protection of the species. So the, the HCP implementation team is really, really important on the, on the enforcement end of things. And I absolutely support including it because the language and, you know, maybe it'd be good to sort of send that out to planning commission members, the, the, the actual language behind the HCP implementation team. But the language that I see, it, it not only talks about what that team does, but for me, what's really also very important about it is it also says, it specifies who is gonna be on that team. And it says the HCP implementation team will be composed of county staff and three to five biologists who collectively have experience with conservation agricultural practices and the covered species and their habitat types. Now, I might want to, you know, we might want to explore whether that's the absolutely right membership. I might want to specify biologists who have experience in conservation agricultural practices and, you know, the particular endangered species or something like that. But I think it's really important to specify who the team members are for this because it plays such an important role. So I absolutely support including that. So that's my answer to your question. Thanks.
I was gonna say, I was gonna give a little bit more description of the HCP implementation team and the roles and responsibilities that are envisioned for this team. This particular team would help the county adaptively, adaptively manage the criteria for selecting conservation lands. They would be reviewing proposed changes to standards in, to performance standards or site evaluation protocols. And this would be for our mitigation sites, not necessarily for our development. But these are our mitigation site performance standards. They would be reviewing the progress towards meeting the HCP commitments and the incidental take conditions, incidental take permit conditions and review that annual report prior to submission, prior to providing it to the Board of County Commissioners and submission to US Fish and Wildlife, which is an annual submission. They would be providing guidance for the conservation land system restoration, management activities, monitoring as we move into the future years. We know climate change is something that we need to be concerned with. And are there, do we need to adaptively change or manage how we manage the land? They would be providing input there as well as coordinating as requested a guidance and recommendations for conservation measures, land issues and covered species needs. Providing guidance for integration with other monitoring and research efforts. Because WDFW, DNR and WSU do do a lot of research out on the prairies for a number of different things that are conservation related as well as providing program improvement recommendations in the program implementation to staff. So just wanted to provide that. I will make sure that everybody has a copy of seven point two point three, so you can read it for yourselves.
Commissioner Halverson?
Yeah, I, I concur with Commissioner Wheatley on that. When you, when you have a section right below it that talks about appeals and then another section that talks about enforcement. And you need to have something in there that talks about how they're gonna get the information. I think putting the definition in the ordinance itself is a good idea, Chris.
Okay, I can work something up.
Do you have any other questions for Chris on this topic? Chris, do you have anything more to present on this topic?
Today, no. I will bring, I can bring this back and we can go through. Are there any, I guess, I would ask if there are any particular sections that the planning commission wants to dive into so that I'm not going through this section by section and reading it to you. No one wants me to do that for, for sure.
Is there anybody on the commission that would like to focus the efforts? Or where they should be focused at? All right. Well, thank you for your presentation this evening. We'll be moving on to agenda item seven, which is a work session on the shoreline master program presented by Andrew Defobus. Andrew?
Okay. Good evening, Planning Commission. My name is Andrew Defobus. I'm an interim senior planner with Thurston County Community Planning. I'll go ahead and share my screen and launch a PowerPoint for this evening. Okay, so hopefully that is up and running. This evening, we will have a continuation of the conversation that the planning commission began at the last meeting. So we're going to look at some requests from citizens to re-review select shoreline environment designations, comments that came out of the public comment period for the public hearing that the planning commission just had on the draft. I also did attempt to bring back some information the planning commission asked for as best as I was able to. And we can talk about that when we get down into the specific case study here. But essentially, yeah, tonight and at the next couple of meetings, we'll take a look at the requests from citizens at the any analysis and recommendations I was able to put together. And you know, the planning commission does have the latitude to propose revisions to shoreline environment designations consistent with the designation criteria in, in the SMP. And so tonight, well, it's the same set I had for you last time because we didn't get through everything. There we'll look at one on Bud Inlet. We've got two requests from Long Lake and then one each from Summit and Pittman Lake. And all the citizen requests were in the written public comment record and are available on our website and have previously been distributed to the planning commission. So I gave a bit more background last meeting. I'm not going to go into the whole spiel on shoreline environment designations. But I did at least want to slide in here that discussed it briefly. Also, I put together a memo for the planning commission, just a summary of all things shoreline master program. Not intended to be comprehensive on every topic, but to give a good overview for our new members of some of the background and the, the, the planning framework, and then also where this effort has been to date. So to state it as briefly as I can, shoreline environment designations are one element of a shoreline master program update. They control what uses are allowed in, in the shoreline and what permits are needed. And also how and which development standards are going to apply. The, all that work is based on inventory and characterization that is done earlier in the shoreline master program update process. And that paints a picture of the existing conditions on the shoreline, how much have they been developed or modified? What's the vegetation like? What ecological function are these areas providing? What is the zoning and land use and future intended uses of these areas? All that information provides a snapshot to, to build the rest of, of the document, including the environment designations. And generally speaking, I've got the five that are included in the master program up here and they're sort of a continuum, right? So the natural shoreline environment designation is proposed in general for shorelines that are more intact and are less degraded. On the other end of things, you have the shoreline residential environment designation, which is proposed for shorelines that have been more impacted and feature more dense residential development. And then in between those two ends are rural and urban conservancy that, you know, are still providing function, have some environmental limitations, but also feature some degree of development and may or may not be, you know, situated close to an urban area. And then, of course, below the ordinary high watermark, we've got the aquatic shoreline environment designation. So some things to keep in mind as we think about all this is that, you know, all these shoreline reaches we're going to look at might not fit neatly in one box. They might meet the criteria of more than one or some of one SED and some of another. But what I'm hoping for from planning commission is a recommendation on the best fit based on the ground conditions and the criteria that we have. The SED or environment designation system is only one component of ensuring known at loss of ecological function, which is a requirement of the shoreline master program. And obtaining that goal is something that I'd like the planning commission to keep in mind as we review these as well. And we'll be looking only at mapped jurisdiction. So the actual extent of a property that's going to be subject to the master program is determined in the field. So we've, we've got maps that, that represent the best ability to show what we think are going to be subject to the master program, but it's got to be confirmed in the field when we're doing an application review. And of course, shoreline environment designations and the SMP as a whole are only one piece. It's only one factor that's going to potentially affect how shorelines can and will be developed. Okay, so that we'll start with the reach that we looked at the last time, which was on Bud Inlet. It's Zangle Cove, reach Bud Inlet sixteen to seventeen. And so we looked at this last time. I tried to bring back some more information in the slides here. So we're, I'm looking for a recommendation from planning commission on the whole reach. Some of these things will be more parcel specific as we get further in, but this is for the whole reach. Chair Castillo, I see a question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, you're up.
Okay, yeah, just there was a question at the last meeting about whether there were steep banks as part of this. It wasn't me that asked that, but it seems like an important question because since that last meeting, I found out that Zangle Cove is Pigeon Guimut territory and that means banks, I believe. So I'm curious to know if you were able to find out if there's steep banks on this parcel.
Yes, I will touch on that. So I was going to run through the, the presentation I gave last time and then conclude with the new information that I have for the, for the planning commission. But yes, I do have information on that and so yes, so stay tuned. Okay. And yes, I'll, I'll count on you all to let me know when there's a question or a hand raised. I can't see all, all the faces. Okay, so what we're looking at here in the left-hand side of your screen is just a map that's intended to give you a general picture of where we're talking about in the county here, the yellow circle on that map. This is in the Boston Harbor area north of Olympia. And to the right is, is a picture that shows the reach itself bounded by the yellow squiggly lines. Currently, this reach is residential, or excuse me, it's a rural shoreline environment designation. The two parcels in the southeastern corner are conservancy, but the vast majority of it is rural. The proposed shoreline environment designation in the draft is rural conservancy. The citizen request is that this be returned to a shoreline residential SED as previous drafts had reflected. So this was, this one was touched on by several comment letters. I've listed them out there for anyone who wants to go back and take a look at those specifically. And I'm summarizing here some of the things that, that folks discussed. That, you know, this, this whole reach is part of the original Boston Harbor plat and has a limited area of more intense rural development zoning districts, which, you know, enables more dense development than other rural zoning districts in the county. And that the area is also served by sewer system. Commenters discussed how the area has been residential for a long time and that there are homes that are close to the water that have all manner of modifications, including armoring, lawns and decks. That native vegetation has been removed in some places and that this area appears to be similar in character to other areas that are proposed to be shoreline residential. One thing to touch on here on the sewer, I, you know, I've heard from, from the folks who live out here that, that all these areas are on sewer. I looked into it. I couldn't find in the time that I had, you know, a map that showed that they, every single parcel is. But to my understanding, a lot of this area is sewed. So I think for the purposes of conversation, we should be considering that it is largely sewed, if not wholly sewed in this area. Okay, so I'll go through. So again, the way this is structured is just showing, showing the reach and then alongside the criteria. And to go into some analysis here, so I've got the criteria on the left from each of these SEDs and then information I was able to find from the inventory characterization report or the SED report and then notes that I had put together which are not finalized by any means. So any changes that do occur to any of these reaches based on planning commission discussion, I'll be, you know, having to do a write-up. That goes as a supplement to our SED report moving forward, but these are notes in my, that represent my thoughts to date. So looking at the criteria, is this reach outside of incorporated municipalities, outside of urban growth areas? Yes, it is. And is it supporting low intensity resource-based uses? No, it is not. The primary use of this reach is residential development. And so that goes to the third bullet point, is it accommodating residential uses? Yes, it is with varying intensity and distance from the shoreline as I was able to observe from aerial photography. Does the area support or the reach support human use but is subject to environmental limitations? And the answer to that from my analysis is yes, it is supporting human uses. The mapping out there does indicate the presence of steep slopes and the presence of bluffs that appear to be of varying height. Can the area support low intensity water dependent uses without significant adverse impact? It would appear that low intensity uses may be more appropriate in the areas that have intact vegetation and perhaps have more function that could potentially be impacted. Again, I want to draw back to that conversation about known at loss as a requirement of the SMP. Is there private or publicly owned lands of high recreational value or historic cultural or potential for public access? There's limited public access opportunity out here. These are all smaller parcels in individual private ownership. I didn't see anything listed in those reports or on geodata for, you know, public access or for cultural sites, although again, I would point out the, the significance of the whole of Puget Sound to the tribes in the area. And then does it meet the presentation or does it not meet designation criteria for the natural environment? And it does not appear to, just based on the level of development that is out there. So looking now to the shoreline residential criteria. Getting my notes to scroll. Okay, great. So does it? That one, the first criteria for the shoreline residential SED is that it does not meet the criteria for either the natural or world conservancy environment. And as I just mentioned, it does not appear to meet the criteria for natural portions of this reach do appear to meet some of the criteria for rural conservancy. Although portions of this reach are also more densely developed and perhaps, you know, do not meet that criteria. Is it predominantly single family or multifamily residential development or platted and planned as such? It is a lammert. Again, it is an area that is zoned for more intense rural development. And the vast majority of these lots do contain residential development. I think there might only be a couple that do not. I want to be clear that it is, these lots do have residential development on them. And many homes are close to or within the buffer that, that shoreline residential designation would provide. And there are shoreline modifications associated with those. And is the majority of the lot within shoreline master program jurisdiction? Yes, this appears to be true for virtually all the lots in the reach as best as we're able to estimate it because the ordinary high watermark is not something that is actually mapped until we go into the field as part of a project review. And has ecological function been impacted by more intense modification in use? This is again, something that seems to vary across the reach. There, some lots are more developed than others with varying degrees of vegetation removal. Distance of the homes to the water and presence of things like shoreline armoring or docks. On either end of the reach, there appear to be, you know, higher banks with wider strips of vegetation between the primary residential structures and the water, which suggests that ecological function, there may be more function in those areas. So turning now to some of the newer information that was requested at the planning, last planning commission meeting. I did go ahead and I didn't show the map of the steep slopes, which comes from our critical areas ordinance. But virtually all of these properties, except for I think about three or four lots in the center of the reach here are mapped as having steep slopes. And that is an indicator that, that we use, you know, based on the soil types that we have out there that Chris kind of touched on that soil type mapping in her presentation. Based on our soil mapping, based on our topography and our LIDAR and all the best information we have about the conditions out here reflects that perhaps there may be the presence of steep slopes does show up on, on almost all these lots. But what I thought would be more useful here is to kind of to show you the topography. And so here I took a screenshot of this reach with the topo lines on. These are 10 foot contour lines. So this reach, if you can see my cursor and starts right here where my cursor is and you go up and around the point there. And then as you come off this photograph, pick up here and come down to the reach ends right about here. That's where that creek flows out into Zangle Cove. And same contour lines, but instead of just the background image, it's, uh, this shows the LIDAR. So it gives a digital representation of, of the ground out there. There were questions about the stream that flows into Zangle Cove. So I did some digging on that in our geodata system and talked to some of our staff. And I do want to point out and remind folks that only a small portion of this stream is actually likely to be within shoreline jurisdiction. So yes, it is, it flows into a water body that is a shoreline, but the stream itself is not, is not a shoreline of the state. So only the portion of the stream that crosses shoreline jurisdiction, that essentially 200 feet landward of the ordinary high watermark. Only that area would be subject to the master program. The, the rest of it would be subject to critical areas ordinance and any other codes, but I just want to make that distinction. So as far as our mapping goes, this area, the stream is mapped as a type five stream, which I believe is a it's a seasonal stream. It doesn't necessarily flow all year round. At least that is the, the bucket it is in. It is mapped as having an adrumous fish presence. Portions of the stream have a mapped wetland, which in the picture on the right, you can see the light blue areas are, are mapped wetlands associated with that stream. And from our staff perspective, it may be an intermittent stream or a seasonal stream. I did find some, I went on Wildfish Conservancy's website. They've got some really good resources of mapping and all their field work that they've done and observations they've made. You can go and click around. So I looked at that and they had some information back from 15 years ago that noted at the time some fish presence. And they noted two dams that occur within that stream. And our information that the county has a mapped fish barrier culvert at Seventy Third Avenue Northeast. So the big fat caveat on all those things is that it's the best information that we have on the, with the data that's available and any of, of this information, the type of stream, what sort of habitat it has and, you know, the wetlands that are out there and what sort of buffers those would potentially command as part of a development project. All that information would be determined in the field. But this was just to give you a rough sense of what the information that we had available on this particular feature. And before I move on, a couple, touch on a few things that, that planning commission asked for that I unfortunately am not really able to provide. There were questions about wanting to look under the tree canopy. And unfortunately, we're kind of limited to what we can see from aerial photography at this stage. We're not going to, we, we can't really go out in the field and look at all these and we have to use the data that we have. So planning commissioners are welcome to look at the imagery on the we'd created a tool that lets you look at the different reaches and the SEDs that are proposed. And you can turn that on and off and look at the aerial. So I can send links out to that information if that would be interest, interesting and would potentially give you a better chance at seeing things versus the screenshots here. But that's really the best that we have to work with, unfortunately. And then as far as wanting to superimpose the potential buffers on here, I know there was a talk about that as well. The, we don't have the mapping of the ordinary high watermark that would enable us to confidently put the buffer on there. So the rural conservancy buffer would be 125 per the planning commission's recommendation. And the shoreline residential would be 50 feet, but we don't really have a starting point to put those lines on. The water body that you see or the, you know, the lines that are representing Puget Sound, it, it's, it's in our water bodies layer, but it is not and is not intended to be the ordinary high watermark. But I can say, you know, in looking at the images, you can see there is a range of distances of structures from, from the shoreline in general. But unfortunately, we don't have the ability to map that ordinary high watermark at this, you know, at this scale. So going into findings and recommendation and then I'll turn it over to you all. And this is the same as I had last time. So it appears that portions of this reach meet different criteria of So it appears that portions of this reach meet different criteria of a couple shoreline environment designations depending on where you're at. It would appear the central portion of the reach has more densely constructed homes that are closer to the water with with more modification, less vegetation. And that other areas appear to contain larger vegetated areas between the homes and water. And as we saw in the topography, potentially areas have some higher bank to them as well. So my recommendations, as I mentioned last time, there's two. The first one I'll focus on is the actual extent of this reach. It, as you look to the, to the left or to the west of this region, again, I apologize, I didn't have an image of that. Again, the becomes, you know, lower bank and homes that are closer to the water. And it appears that this reach here, there's at least one property here right on the edge that where I, the one drawing this map back in the day probably would have recommended that, you know, and include that one because that is development that is more closely resembling shoreline residential and is right on the edge of another reach that is also shoreline residential. So my first recommendation is to shift the reach line over one by one parcel to move that one into the reach to the left. And then the second one has to do with the shoreline environment designation recommendation for the whole rest of the reach. And my recommendation would be to take those parcels in the center and roughly approximated by the lines here, the pink lines and the area bounded in between these pink lines to propose that that be shoreline residential and retain the remainder as rural conservancy. So I will pause there. That was a whole lot of words and I will turn it over to the planning commission.
Commissioner.
Comment.
Entire reach of shoreline residential.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion on the floor for leaving and second for leaving that entire reach of shoreline residential. Is there any other discussion?
Yeah.
Kevin, Commissioner Pesen, your, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm glad that Andrew came up with the hybrid recommendation. I was going back through the public comments, just doing a search filter for Zangle. And many, many of the public commenters related to Zangle expressed a strong desire to do exactly that, to have the densely developed rural areas designated, keep the same designation. And to move to natural those areas which were prime habitat. So it's, I think Andrew's recommendation is very in line with the large volume of the public feedback and comments.
Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, I'm arguing against it as well. And in fact, I would even argue against Andrew's recommendation. I, I think that we need to have some discussion about the purpose of the SMP is to enforce the shoreline management act. And I think as a principle, we always have to be most protective of the purpose of the shoreline management act. And that means that we always default to what is the best interest of the state and the people of the state. And it's very clear that the best interest is to do as much as we can to preserve ecological function. I sent Andrew and he's probably already got that in his mapping, but I sent a picture to Andrew of the Puget Sound Water Characterization Atlas that shows that that section of shoreline that's actually the more residential one is higher rated for its ecological function, actually. So, you know, we need, we need to think about that. And especially, the other thing about this is, and I really thank you, Andrew, for for that, that wonderful memo that you wrote. That was just terrifically helpful. I went back and looked at the wax because that really helps me to understand the purpose behind these zoning designations. And it seems to me that the wax that whack 173 26 to 11 in its defining of a rural conservancy environment. It specifically addresses feeder bluffs and steep shorelines. And says that that is a criterion for including in rural conservancy. It's a mistake to think that rural conservancy means you can't have residential. You know, have residences, have neighborhoods in it. It's irrelevant, I think, whether there's sewer lines or not. It's actually a really wonderful thing for shoreline ecological function that there are sewer lines. But it's certainly not a reason not to want to be as protective as possible of that ecological function. But I'm really, you know, this is maybe a policy thing here, which is kind of what we're here to do. I think if you have feeder bluffs on the shoreline, that's an argument for, you know, in this situation for rural conservancy all the way down, especially when when it, it's been, there's mapping that shows that that stretch of shoreline with the residences is of ecological importance. Thanks.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thanks. I, I've been thinking about this and and trying to take a step back and look at the big picture. And if, if the, the requirement of the shoreline master program is, is no net loss of ecological function, which has been commented on by Andrew. And the role of, of our body is to provide a recommendation to the county commissioners that they can adopt. Then to allow a designation that allows for more intense development than exists currently in one reach would require that we take away the ability to develop in other reaches. Because we have to look at this thing as in, in the totality of Thurston County and in all the, all the parcels that that are, fall under the, the shoreline master program. And I, I think that if, if those things are the case, our default needs to be less development in, in each reach. Otherwise, if we look at it just piece by piece by pieces, well, it makes sense that we would allow further development here. Because look at what's around in this reach. We get to the end and we've, we've provided a recommendation that the commissioners can't actually adopt in accordance with the requirement for the shoreline master program. So I think the default needs to be to the conditions on the ground. And, and so I, I would recommend that, that we leave this in rural conservancy.
Commissioner Halverson.
I seconded Doug's motion because last week I actually drove out to this location and I looked at it on the ground because it, I was, it was concerning to me about the bluffs and stuff and the cove. All of them have sewer, everything that's around there. Now, I didn't walk on personal property. I didn't go out and look at the bluffs and go down because that's not something that I do. I'm not going to invade somebody's privacy. But the canopy that that Andrew showed is kind of misleading. There are homes on every one of these parcels. These parcels are very small. It's an older neighborhood. I only found one parcel that didn't have a home built on it. And when I came back and looked at the assessor's website, that parcel is owned by a person that owns the lot next door. So this is, it has been, the 1990 SMP, the 2017 update showed this property as shoreline residential. And now we're, we're even discussing the fact that we're going to change it. What I would say is there were 2,700 redesignations within the county. I don't know, Andrew, maybe you can explain how many of those have actually been changed from that 2,700 that the county recommended. But I know of only 26 out here at Lake Lawrence and a few at Long Lake. But out of that 2,700, I would have to say that having been to a lot of these meetings and, and seen a lot of these testimonies, I would say it's less than 100 of them that have actually been re-designated back to where they were in 2017 and 1990. So there's a whole lot of elbow room for this no net loss thing. And to tell residents out here on this point that, hey, you were residential at one time. You took and you paid for a sewer system on your own to put it in to be environmentally conscious. But we're going to say it's rural conservancy now. This is a tight community, narrow lots, small lots, built right up to the shoreline because it's a 100 year old community. And Andrew, you can tell us, I don't know this for a fact, but when I went back and looked and you know, I've had problems looking at geodata in the past and I've had to call you to ask for verification on it. But when I looked at it, that reach to the north of this inlet was conservancy. Which means there's a 250 foot buffer from that reach, which would stretch all the way across that cove. So that would be, that would impact anything those people down there in that cove would want to do. Even though with this cove is, this reach is designated real shoreline residential. It would still be impacted by those same rules of that 250 foot buffer. And when I looked at the maps at geodata, the creek and majority of that cove were not within that reach. Now you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I saw looking at the, the boundaries in the geodata. And like you said, you, it's kind of hard to tell where the high watermark is to get your distance off of that. But we have a whole lot of buffer with that 2,700 parcels to get to no net loss. This is already a net loss. This is a highly impacted residential area. And I think it's crazy to not designate or just stop. Thank you.
So I would, I would like to say that I do believe that having this a shoreline residential would actually be the same as what it has been prior. So there would not be a, a loss calculation done on it because it would be a status quo. I would also like to think that because of these high banks and the possible creek there, that there are other areas of county code that would address protection of these areas, including the critical areas ordinance for steep slopes and for wetlands and streams. So I don't think that an SED change to a more protective SED would actually do anything that isn't already being done by other parts of the code, nor would it impact a no net loss calculation. Because it would be just the same. So that does bring us back through the role again. So Commissioner Carmen, if you'd like to say something again, go ahead.
Oh, you just, I'm sorry, I left my hand up. You just said what I was going to say, Eric.
All right. Do we have any other further discussion on this?
Yeah. I was looking at this and
Scott, I think we lost you. Are you still there?
I'm back. So there's two places in the designation criteria that mentioned lammers. Shoreline residential environment says assign a shoreline residential environment designation to shoreline areas inside urban growth areas. Incorporated municipalities, rural areas of more intense development or master plan resorts. If they are predominantly single family or multi-family residential development or planned and plotted for residential development. And the part that's up here that I think has been missed. And I real, I, I'll be honest, I kind of missed it too. Going through the designation criteria for rural conservancy. You've got A, B, C, D, E. The next paragraph is areas designated in a local comprehensive plan as limited areas of more intense rural development. As provided in chapter 3678 or 70A, may be designated an alternative shoreline environment. Provided it is a consistent with the objectives of the growth management act and this chapter. So I mean, I think this is clearly a lammert. And the two things that we have say that shoreline residential is a lammert. And that even if it is, looks like rural conservancy, if it's lammert, we can make it something else.
Is that it, Scott? Scott, are you done?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Commissioner Wheatley.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to hold up the vote for too long here, but I think Scott's comment points to some further discussion that I think we need to have about proposed revisions to this, to the SMP. We have to remember that, that this is going to be under the new SMP, whatever that is. And there may be some revisions to explore. I think that, that, you know, that these, that, that all of the, the areas being presented tonight raise kind of interesting and important policy questions about, about those designations. And, and I think that there's a sort of a gray area. I think that the reason that they're before us is that there's some kind of gray areas that, that these fall into. And we should really at some point have an opportunity to talk about where Paul, you know, how, how the SMP should address those kinds of things where where you have kind of a, a the overarching shoreline management act and its purposes and goals. And how that's going to apply because Thurston County is a highly developed shoreline kind of a county. And, and so I just see these as kind of larger policy questions. And, and I don't believe that just because it's a lammert means that the whole thing, that that's the only thing to consider. Sorry to be so one-winded.
It's all right. Thank you. Is there any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah, I just want to point out, that's not the only thing I'm considering. The biggest thing I'm considering when I look at this is how highly developed these properties are already. And I question whether changing the designation to rural conservancy or shoreline residential is going to make much difference in ecological function. Because I look at these properties and say, these people have already built out to a certain point. And either way, they aren't going to be able to build more on these properties.
Well, that's, that's why the bluffs are kind of an important consideration for this one, I think. Because that kind of goes to that. And we also, I think, need to spend some time looking at sort of what the management policies are around those designations. Because I, I, that, that's where, you know, we need to be looking at this from the shoreline inwards to be applying the shoreline management act.
You also have to remember, we also have critical areas, which is going to, which is actually what is going to decide on the bluffs, what you can build and what you can't.
All right. Well, we have a, a motion on the floor. The motion is to change reach MBU 15 to MBU 16 to shoreline, SED of shoreline residential. All in favor, say aye.
Eric.
Yeah.
16 to 17.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Let me restate that. The motion on the floor is to change the the reach of MBU 16 to MBU 17 to shoreline residential. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
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 Motion carries. Andrew, we're ready for the next one.
Okay, is there a, any conversation about moving the reach break line to include? Well, I guess it wouldn't, maybe that might be a moot point at this point. Okay. Well, I guess it wouldn't, maybe that might be a moot point at this point. Okay.
That would be a moot point.
Yes.
Both sides.
Thank you. Okay, great. Um, I, just to touch on a couple of things briefly, um, before we move on here that I just heard in conversation. Um, I, so I want to correct, uh, I think it was Commissioner Halverson who said that a lot of the creek is not in shoreline jurisdiction. He's absolutely right. I, I brought back that information just based on the conversation last time. Um, but yeah, most of it's not in the SMP jurisdiction. Um, it flows through it and that portion that's within two hundred feet would be. Covered by SMP, but the rest would be critical areas. Um, as far as the reach to the right here. Um, yes, that reach is proposed to be conservancy. Um, I think it is conservancy today. And if that is the case, it would have a two hundred and fifty foot buffer based on the critical areas update from two thousand twelve. However, that buffer goes from the ordinary high back onto those properties only. It doesn't go forward across the cove to um, to the properties we're talking about tonight. So for the marine shoreline, the buffers are in one direction backward from the ordinary high. If that, if we were talking about a stream, you know, you'd get a buffer on both sides of it, but in this instance, it's just, just on um the sound. Um, and then a couple of other things that I, I think I'll, I'll go ahead and move on. Uh, but one point I would also bring up, um, just in general for any of these things and just to let everyone know. If there is not a consensus or there is a minority opinion in addition to the majority opinion. Uh, or motion, those are certainly things that uh planning commissioners are, have the ability to put forward. Minority reports for any of this information, so.
Yeah, and I think we're gonna, we're gonna ask for a minority report on, on all of this to be forwarded with uh the regular planning commission recommendation.
Yeah.
Commissioner Carmen, did you have something?
Yes, I do. Um, just as a comparison. We just made this decision on the, on these reaches here and, and. As everybody said, this is densely uh residential. There are other areas that I know of, which are. What I would consider natural. And are currently uh designated as shoreline residential. And uh, and, and as, and, and proposed to be under the new designations to be shoreline residential. It doesn't happen to be one of the parcels that you've got listed to talk about, but. Um, I would certainly like to look at some of these if we think that they should be. Upgraded or downgraded. I'm not sure which way you want to, you want to call it. Uh, we ought to be able to put those in there.
Thank you, Doug. Andrew, we're ready for the next one then.
Okay, great. Moving on. New territory. Okay, so the next one we're gonna talk about here uh is a portion of a reach out on Long Lake that's known as Carpenter Park. We did receive several comments about this one as well during the SMP. Uh, public hearing. So here is the, uh, the, on the, again, the left side of your screen, upper left, showing you a general location. Of this reach and Long Lake out here. Uh, it's just east of Lacey. And uh, here is a zoomed in photograph, the bottom left here that shows that parcel and what it looks like. In the middle of the screen here, uh, I have a snapshot of the entire reach bounded at the very top and the very bottom of that photo with pink lines. And the relation of where, or the position of this parcel in relation to that reach. And then on the right-hand side, again, there's the parcel and at that showing you the portion that's mapped in shoreline jurisdiction, which as we all know is. It's the map. So uh, this parcel is part of the larger reach, LLO four to LLO five, Long Lake four, Long Lake five. Uh, and is represents about twelve hundred linear feet of shoreline. Currently, uh, this, this is zoned or is designated as rural. It is proposed to be shoreline residential, which again is that walk across, uh, it's the most analogous to the rural designation. And the citizen request, what we heard was to consider rural conservancy or natural on this one. So here are, uh, we got several comments on this one. Again, there's all the letters that we got. Um, and so some of the things that folks talked about were. That uh, this is one of the last undeveloped areas on Long Lake. They mentioned fish and wildlife habitat that it provides, including wetlands, uh, and the recreation it's provided in the past. Uh, it's across from a public park and is part of the view shed for folks who use the lake. And a lot of folks uh discuss concerns about impacts that uh shoreline residential SED could allow. Uh, in the development that could go along with that. Uh, we are also aware that this property is currently subject to a county compliance investigation based on recent alterations that have occurred out in the property. Um, to my knowledge, um, the landowner is still in the process of addressing those issues. So all the analysis you're getting here tonight focuses on the condition of this property prior to, to any of that activity. All right, so again, here's our reach and our criteria. And then. Everything that came out of my brain when I looked at this. So is this, uh, looking at the criteria for natural? Um, is it ecologically intact and therefore currently performing an important irreplaceable function? Um, the reach as a whole, most certainly is not. Um, this parcel does appear to be more heavily vegetated than other areas within the reach. Uh, the shoreline does contain a dock and a swim area and we do know that there was, you know, a, a long history of recreation on this property. It used to um be a, a, a private recreation property for local carpenters union. So I have not been out to this site. I have not been on the ground on any of these. Again, we're looking at things we can see from the air. But I am aware that, you know, it has had a past, a lot of past human use. Uh, is it ecosystems or geological types of particular scientific and educational interest? Nothing that was noted in any of the reports that were done before proposing designations for this reach. Is it unable to support new development or uses without significant adverse impacts to ecological function or risks to human safety? The property is heavily vegetated in shoreline jurisdiction, so development, you know, dense development could introduce significant impacts. Uh, any development would need to demonstrate no net loss. And it is mapped with steep slopes, which would be a potential safety hazard, but of course, that would need evaluation during the land use process. Land use review process. Um, does it include largely undisturbed portions of shoreline areas? The vegetation appears to be intact through photographs from the air, but again, I have not been out there to verify this and we do know that this property has had. Um, you know, a history of recreational use. And does it retain the majority of its natural functions? It's heavily vegetated, haven't been on site. I can't tell you a lot about that other than there's a, you know. Uh, native vegetation, you can see a lot of Douglas firs, um, shoreline configuration. Um, I can't, I can't specifically comment on that. Um, again, there is a large dock that is visible, uh, unsure of what other modifications might exist in shoreline jurisdiction. Moving on to rural conservancy for this parcel. Is it outside the incorporated municipalities and urban growth areas? Yes, it is. Is it currently supporting low intensity resource use? It has had those uses in the past, uh, recreational use, uh, but currently, uh. Don't know, don't know what's going on out there. Uh, is it currently accommodating residential uses? It does not appear to be within shoreline jurisdiction. However, uh, there is at least one home that's on the property I found in the assessor's records. I believe it's outside of shoreline jurisdiction. Um, and can it support, or is it supporting human uses but subject to limitations? Yes, it has supported human use in the past and theoretically could. Again, I'm not exactly sure what it's currently supporting out there. But there are no homes that I could see within shoreline jurisdiction. Uh, but it does have limits, map limitations. Uh, owing to the wetlands and the steep slopes. So can it, oh, sorry, I went ahead. Um, can it support low intensity water dependent uses without significant adverse impacts? Based on the current condition, I can see and without being on the ground, that may be a better way to preserve ecological function. Again, there is some development out there that's occurred with the dock and swim area, um, but a lot of it does appear to be heavily vegetated. And it's private or publicly owned lands of recreational or historic cultural potential public access value. Nothing was noted for this specific parcel in the reports that I reviewed, the inventory characterization or the SED report. Again, it has historically been used for private recreational access and theoretically could have that potential in the future. But you know, I, I won't comment on the, what the current owner is doing with it or plans to do with it, because do not know. And then that it does not meet the designation criteria for the natural environment. Um, it may meet some criteria, uh, as I discussed previously, but you know, unsure on. Do not know for uh all of those criteria, so uh can't really confirm that. So looking at this versus the shoreline residential criteria, which again is what it currently is, it's rural and it's proposed to be shoreline residential. Does it, uh, it doesn't meet the criteria for natural resource conservancy, uh, rural conservancy. Uh, again, it may meet the criteria for some of those potentially. Is it predominantly single family or multifamily residential development? The majority of the reach does appear to meet that criteria. However, this parcel, um, is larger, it has not been subdivided. And that does not currently appear to have residential development in shoreline jurisdiction. Is the majority of the lot in shoreline jurisdiction? Again, that appears to apply to the majority of the parcels in this reach. However, not to this specific parcel. And then have ecological functions been impacted by more intense modification in use? Uh, did not do a site visits, um, but there does not appear to be intense modification in use within shoreline jurisdiction. Um, from the aerial photography, you can see a lot of vegetation. Um, so significant impacts, um, not, not visible. So the findings that I had for this one are that this reach is pretty unique within this reach. It's really large. Uh, and only has a portion within shoreline jurisdiction. Uh, a lot of the area within shoreline jurisdiction does not appear to have been significantly developed and it appears to retain dense vegetative cover. Uh, whereas the majority of the other partial parcels in the reach are more densely residential development. So staff recommendation or options for you to consider would be, um, that the parcel does appear to meet some criteria of both natural and rural conservancy. But not the shoreline residential, uh, and that is something that ecology agrees with. Um, personally, I believe that rural conservancy may be the best fit if planning commission is going to consider. Uh, changing this, uh, given the pictured condition, uh, and what we know about the, the past use and level development that may be out there. Uh, and uh, if the designation does change, we could do that by either, you know, doing it within the original reach. And so you keep the reaches as they are and just have a portion of that reach changed to a different designation, uh, or we could create. A new reach break. Uh, and talking about that with ecology, they've commented that, you know, the county does have smaller reaches than, then is represented by the distance. Of this parcel, their length. Um, so there's precedent for doing that. Should planning commission want to recommend that? Uh, and you know, in the personal opinion of staff I talked to, uh, she said, probably should have been its own reach to begin with, regardless of the designation. But just that it is, you know, different in characteristics and, and the size of it. So I'm gonna go ahead and pause there and turn it over to uh planning commission.
Andrew, could you uh tell us, uh, from, from a staff point, if we do want to break this out from the reach? Is that, is that, I, I think that it'd be very easy for the planning commission to decide that this should be treated differently than the rest of the reach. Would it be an easier thing to uh call it out specifically within that reach as different or to make new reach breaks?
Uh, although it would require more, more work, uh, I think it would potentially be cleaner to just create a different reach. Um, I think there's, there is, I think it, it could be warranted, uh, in any of these changes that we're making. Again, there, you know, I'll, I'll feed any proposed changes to our GIS person who will update the maps. And we'll make those changes in the supplement to the SED report that goes forward. Um, we're not changing the original documents, so. I think it would potentially be cleaner to just create a new reach if that is, um, what the planning commission wants to do.
Thank you. Commissioner Carmen?
This, this, this happens to be the, the piece of property that I talked about earlier. I didn't realize you were bringing it to us, Andrew. So just to give you all some background, I do live on Long Lake, which is where this is, so I have seen this property and been associated with it. The property has not been used for over twenty years. And while there is a dock and the current developer has put in some armoring along the shoreline without permits. And done some, some modifications and cutting down some trees. But if the tree line that you see there is basically the two hundred foot setback. I mean, it would be two hundred feet to the tree line. That house that you see there is, is, is well behind that. That used to be the caretaker's house for the property. And all the vacant land you see there where it was campgrounds for the carpenters union people to bring their trailers and their tents and whatnot to access it. Um, so it is, it has basically been untouched, locked up, chained over and everything. For um, at least twenty-two to twenty-three years that I know of. So it's pretty natural.
Do we have any more, uh, questions for Andrew on this particular piece? Commissioner Halverson?
Uh, yeah, Andrew, uh, I know you may not know this, but uh, so the, the furthest uh western. Yellow line there on the outside of that property, that's the outside of that reach, LLO four.
Um, this, so what we're, what you're looking at right now is just this parcel, uh, within the reach. I'll back up, uh. To this slide, so this picture here in the middle where the, uh, where it's circled in pink. Right. Uh, at the, at the, at the top and the bottom of that picture, you can see uh pink lines. That's, that's the entire reach, LLO four to LLO five. This one is, uh, it's in the middle, it's a little bit closer to the north end of the reach, but you know, it's, it's almost smack dab in the middle of the entire reach.
Right. Yeah, I would, uh, just like I have with other lakes, when they talk about community areas and parks, uh, that are not totally developed. I'd recommend rural conservancy on this too.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons, do you have something?
Uh, yeah, just, just a comment. This, this looks like the perfect piece to just kind of change it to a rural designation or a natural. Um, it seems to fit that and especially since nobody's using, I don't know what the. Current owner's plans for it is, I don't know if it's still the carpenters union or not, but this just seems like a. It to, to get it to the shoreline residential, or I mean to for a rural. Is, is, this seems like the perfect one for that. Thanks.
Andy, could you tell us what, if there was a consensus on public comment on this particular piece?
Um. Most of the comments that I read and I did actually tally them up, uh, the vast majority of them used the, they use a lot of the same language. I think there was some, some talking points that were circulated and a lot of folks used those in preparing their comments. So the most of them said rural conservancy or natural, so they lumped them together. Uh, and so that's why we looked at all, all things here, but uh, because that's what I was hoping to, not that that is the deciding factor. But you know, if there were, if there was a tally, and I know that in the past planning commission has been interested in that, and so I, I did look at that. But they didn't state a preference as a whole, one way or the other, just that it not be shoreline residential.
Thank you. Commissioner Wheatley?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I have just a kind of a procedural question. Do you need a motion? Um, in order to take this back and, and make your decision, um, is it helpful to you to have that? Um, or, or is it sufficient that there appears to be consensus on this?
Uh, I, I'll defer to the chair to how he wants to, to run these conversations, but I think the motion makes it cleaner. It makes it better for the record.
I, I, I think that if somebody wanted to offer a motion, it would certainly be entertained.
Well, I'd be happy to offer that motion then.
Can we, um, can we finish comments first, then we'll come back to you if that'd be all right? Thank you. Commissioner Simmons? Jimmy?
I just left my hand up, forgot to lower.
Commissioner Hanson?
Oh, I was gonna offer a motion that we take it in pieces and my motion was that we make a recommendation to break this. Parcel out into its own reach.
Okay, let's uh finish up with this uh conversation, then we'll entertain some motions if that's all right. Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, I got, have you, Andrew, have you been able to contact the owner of this? I, I know you said that the county has had some issues with him, but.
I have not been in contact with them. I, I did, you know, just confirm that that investigation had been going on. And you know, it's in between the landowner and the county, working those things out. That's kind of on a separate track of, of what's happening here, but I have not spoken to the owner.
Okay, because I guess. Okay, because I guess my concern is we have a landowner who probably looked at the map and said, oh yeah, I'm shoreline residential. I'm fine with that. And didn't come to the, maybe didn't come to the hearing. And now you've got people that own other properties saying you know, that this seems like they're singling out a single landowner. And I agree, it's probably best as residential or as rural resource, but I have a concern about changing the designation of somebody who's not had any input on what we're doing.
Andrew, if, if we did make a change on this, since this, I don't know if this parcel was included into the 2,700 people that got postcards similar to what Scott was saying, would there be an opportunity for you to send notification to this landowner before the B O C C took action on it?
I, I could take that back and talk about that with Chris. We could, we could certainly talk about that. We didn't notify folks ahead of time for a variety of reasons, because you know, changes have not been made, because the public comment period is closed. Because when we get to the board, we will be reopening that conversation with them about how they want to notify properties. And yes, all, all of the shoreline property owners did get notification that the SMP update effort was occurring and how to comment and how to get, you know, how to be able to find out more information from us as a, as a section as a whole, but that is something we can, we can talk about. I see Chris turn on her camera. I don't know if she has any comments, but.
Chris heard her name.
Okay. Yeah, there, we're just saying if, if the planning commission were to make changes on these individual properties, would there be a way to you know, alert the landowner to that? And I said, you and I could, could discuss how to best do that.
Yeah, I think we would need to go back and look at our budget because it does cost for us to do notifications, but if there are areas that have had a significant change, I think we can find a way to make sure that those property owners are notified that changes are occurring so long as we are targeting our notification in a limited fashion.
So Chris, I think I want to clarify this because my concern isn't, I think the people that, like at Zangle Cove, those people are following what we're doing anyways. They made a request to have their property areas changed. My concern is where we're going to single out one parcel and change it, even though we haven't heard from the landowner.
I tend to agree with Scott. If we make a change to this singular parcel, I would feel much more comfortable about it if you guys could send this one landowner a note before the B O C C takes action on our recommendations.
Yeah. And if it's a handful of landowners, if this is the only one, then great. If there are others that go like this and they're a handful, we can definitely do that.
I think I, I can't foresee this being a whole lot of them. Yeah. Commissioner Wheatley, did you have something else?
Only to make, to make the motion.
I'll come back to you in just a second for the motion. Commissioner Carmen?
Just to answer Jim's question, the developer lives in the house just to the north of that parcel and their plans are to put 32 homes on this part, on this parcel. So it'll be broken up into 32 parcels plus a community property along part of the shoreline. So there will be nine houses built on this block within the, the two, within the tree line. And then the rest of them are built in the back, just as background for the rest of you.
All right, without further discussion, Commissioner Wheatley?
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion that this parcel be designated as rural conservancy.
We have a motion on the floor to, to separate this parcel.
Oh, there was already a motion?
No, you, you made the, Commissioner Wheatley made the motion. It sounded like Commissioner Nelson seconded the motion to separate this parcel out and designate its shoreline environmental designation as rural conservancy. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nate, all those opposed? Any abstentions? I'm going to abstain on this one. The motion carries the Long Lake Carpenter's Park parcel that is in the center of Long Lake zero or oh four to Long Lake oh five have its shoreline environmental designation set to rural conservancy. Andrew, I think that we're running out of time for more SMP stuff and need to move on with the agenda if that is okay.
Yes, with one, one minor clarification, if I can, did that motion include making it a separate reach as well? It sounded like it might have.
I, I think separate reach was better.
Okay.
Unless there's anybody in the group think that that's a bad idea? Commissioner Halverson?
That's what I was going to just clarify that the motion was to make it rural conservancy and its separate reach from the rest of LL04 to LL05.
Commissioner Hanson?
I, I just also like the, the minutes to include that, that it feels like there's a consensus here that we also intend that, that staff notify the, the landowner of this recommendation.
That's great. Thank you, Commissioner Hanson. Commissioner Simmons, did you have something or was that just?
It was along, along the lines of Commissioner Hanson's statement. I, I do believe it's very important that this guy, this owner, landowner gets notified, especially after hearing what Doug says his intentions are for. This could be quite the surprise for him if he comes up to the county and tries to get something done.
If you. It shall be done. Thank you. That concludes my work session for the evening.
Thank you very much, Andy. That was a good one. All right. Next up on our agenda is staff updates.
The only update I have is that the board has opened the public comment period for the preliminary docket. The comprehensive plan and development code docket that public comment period ends at 5:00 PM on February 16th. And that concludes my updates.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the calendar and we're looking is everybody, is anybody not going to be available for the February 16th, 2022 planning commission meeting? Everybody is available? How about for the March 2nd, 2022 planning commission? Looks like everybody is planning on being there. All right. Next up on the agenda is Commissioner Wheatley's discussion for our coming agenda. So the floor is yours.
Thank, thank you. Well, there are a couple of things. I mean, first, what I wanted to talk about was just the, the agenda design or wording is a little bit off from from what the rules of procedure state. And it, it may be, it may be consistent with it, but I think for, for me certainly, and I think for members of the public, it would be helpful to take a look at, at the rules of procedure where you know, the order, you know, there's, what they say really quickly is call to order, public communications, approval of minutes, calendar, new business items, other business and adjournment. Okay. So that's kind of the, the order laid out. And I don't, you know, we kind of do that a little different in terms of we approve the minutes before we have public communications. That's not a big deal. We do the calendar at the end. That's not a big deal. But what I'm kind of concerned about is that it's hard for me and I think hard for members of the general public to know when we're talking about new business, when we're talking about carryover business. When we're doing things that involve actions versus things that are just informational. And so I think it would be helpful to revive, to, to look at that and think about new business items, other business adjournment. And think about how we might make the agenda a little bit more clear about that. You know, especially separating new business from other business. And, and another element of that is for the new business in particular, I think it would be very helpful to have a accompanying statement, like with this one, we have you know, work session, A19 wireless communication. Well, for a member of the public, they're not going to know what that is. They're not going to know if it's new or old, et cetera. So, so that just concerns me a little bit and I, I don't know if we need to have further discussion about it or if it's a matter for the chair and the secretary to maybe discuss, but, but it's just kind of something I'd like to, to suggest we think about. And then under other business, I'm wondering if we can make it a regular practice to include the next meeting's agenda as part of that a, a regular part of our agenda so that we know that we're all, as commissioners, we're always going to have an opportunity to talk about help, you know, suggestions for helping to set the next agenda because right now we don't have a space in in our agenda for commissioners to, to come forward and say, you know, I would like to take a look at this next time or you know, in a, in a couple of iterations. So that's, that's why I wanted to take this time to just kind of make that suggestion. And I don't know if other people might have things that they want to put on the next agenda, but this is what I was, what I was concerned about.
So I'll, I'll speak up as somebody who's been chair before. I don't know that staff always knows what's on the agenda for our next meeting because sometimes it depends on who's available and what information they, you know, sometimes we ask for information tonight. They plan on coming back on us in two weeks, but they can't get that information. So I don't think that we know. The other thing I looked at the, since you said something, I looked at the our rules of procedure tonight. And I don't think that that's, that list includes what needs to be in our agenda. It's not in order. So I don't think it matters that we do things in that order. It also says under new business, briefings, hearings, whatever. So I think that covers that those are new business.
I, I'd also like to say that before German, I, I will ask if there's any other business for the good of the order. So that would be a good opportunity for anybody to say something that they would like to see shown up. And also just, we got to kind of remember too, that we don't, even though we approve the agendas and set the agendas, we have a pretty locked in set of side rails about what we talk about. And if it's not on the docket, we don't, it's not our business. And if we don't do the prioritization of the docket either. So that comes from the Board of County Commissioners. So it's really up to staff to prioritize our time to match how they've been told to prioritize their time. And so I, I think Scott hit it on the head there that a lot of times this needs to be a little bit fluid. And so planning it out for meetings that only happen every other week is a little bit tough. But go ahead, Commissioner Pestinger.
Thank you. We certainly have heard from a large number of members of the public that they've experienced frustration in navigating the information on the website and understanding what the agenda is and what's going to be covered in agenda items. I personally have been unclear beyond the top level topic of say HCP or wireless facilities plan or SMP. In some cases, what level of detail? An example of this, I know there's very concerned groups of citizens related to the Zangle Cove issue that have attended many of our meetings and would love to know if their specific topic was going to be on the agenda. They would have turned out and paid attention and listened to our meeting, I would imagine. So we've heard a lot of public members say they have a hard time seeing what are clearly what our agenda is and knowing when they should attend and participate. And so I think any effort that we can make to provide added detail or clarity would be much appreciated.
That's great, Commissioner. Manager Chapeau, is there anything that we could be doing to add some detail into the agendas of people from the public can get a better idea of what we'll be discussing?
Yeah, I think we can. So we do a web blast or a web mail blast out to those that have signed up to get information for planning commission and our other projects. And we create a we lovingly refer to as a web blurb. And we could take that information that we put in the web mail and put that in the agenda. We, we've already created it. So it's not additional work on staff. And it does give a better description of what will be discussed or what the staff will be bringing forward. We could also make sure that we have two buckets, either new business so that you know it's, you haven't seen it before. Continued business and post-public hearing if the planning commission so would like to see those kind of buckets.
Yeah, leave the label on that'd be great. Commissioner Wheatley, did you have anything else on that you'd like?
Um, I just want to say for staff's sake, I think I don't want to get too specific in what we're talking about because then we put ourselves in a kind of a bundle and you know, maybe we get through something fast, which doesn't happen here very often, but you know, also I don't want people, you know, like, I think on Andrew had all this stuff for the these different reaches set up for our last meeting. And if we start saying, oh, we're going to do this, this and this, then people are going to start showing up as a meeting. And if we don't get to their thing, they're going to say, well, I wasted my whole night at your guys' meeting because you didn't, and you didn't get to it. Whereas at least we just say, you know, we're doing shorelines and you know, this is what we're doing.
Thank you, Scott. Commissioner Wheatley, did you have any more on your topic?
No, that was, that was good. I, you know, we're at nine o'clock just about, so I don't want to stretch out people's time too much here.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else for the good of the order? Kevin, Kevin, do you Commissioner Pessinger, do you still have something?
No, sorry. There's no way for me to lower my hand.
Oh, okay. Well, with that, it is 8:58 and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.